It's six o'clock and I'd like to call the December Planning Board meeting to order. Ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Is, can we get, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting? Has anybody found anything in error? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve last meetings minutes?
Motion to approve.
Say goodbye Mr. Williams. Motion by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The first public comment session is 2022-206-0A special use permit text amendments and the presenter is Ben Howell.
Good evening, board members. So I'll try and keep this relatively short, but this is a text amendment that's been requested and initiated the request to Town Council and Town Administration. Essentially, while it's, we're amending several sections of the code, the overall purpose is to remove the requirement for a special use permit for townhomes, duplexes, and apartments, and replace that with a requirement to do a conditional zoning district for those uses. And so, in order to make that work, we had to do several amendments in several sections. And then I will say to the 155-402 E2D, that is actually just a cleanup amendment to correct some language that was incorrect in the ordinance. So again, in section 155-202 land use regulations, we're replacing that S in the land use table with a C, and there's some language that goes along with that to clarify what that C means. And then in section 155-203L, it's adding language specifying conditional zoning districts require either site plan or master plan and narrative, and also adding some language specifying that specific use standards in Article III apply to conditional zoning districts unless those standards are modified as approved by Town Council. Again, section 402 is just correcting some language under project boundary buffers, replacing plan development with conditional zoning district. And then section 705 is cleaning up the, or making some clarifications to the administration procedures section for conditional zoning districts, removing the minimum size and then the, which is currently, it's, you have to have five acres or one full city block in order to do a conditional zoning district. We're striking that and instead doing a tiered structure where certain conditional zoning districts, if they're under 20 acres in size and/or just a single use, then they can do a site plan with their conditional zoning district. If they're a larger conditional zoning district or proposing multiple uses, they would be able, they would do a master plan and narrative. And then just adding some clarifying language throughout that section to address the new The, there's four approval criteria for text amendments that's on your screen. So the first one is to, is that the extent to which proposed text amendment is consistent with the remainder of the chapter, as well as consistent or inconsistent with approved plans. This text amendment is consistent with the remainder of the code and is actually consistent with 2045 growth plan. There's actually specific language in the growth plan addressing removing these uses out of special use permit. The text amendment is a result of changing circumstances. It will allow more public, more open and more public debate on certain uses, and it will also provide a simpler, simplified process for staff applicants and town councils, again, allowing these uses to go through a legislative process versus a quasi judicial process. The text amendment does not correct an error in the chapter with the exception of 155-402 E2D, and that's where it's replacing the plan development language with conditional zoning district. And the text amendment is, does not, is not caused by trying to comply with state or federal statutes or case law. So with that, staff's recommending, Planning Board discuss and recommend text amendment for sections 155-202, 155-203L, 155-402 E2D, and 155-705 for public hearing consideration by Town Council. And I've also provided a proposed consistency statement that the Planning Board will be, that you're asked to adopt if you choose to recommend these text amendments for approval to Town Council. I'm happy to answer any questions, and this is a public comment session, so if there's any members of the public who would like to speak, they will be, they should be allowed to as well.
Question I have is the, back on the prior thing where it said five, previously five acres or city block, how long was that standard in place?
So conditional zoning districts were only put into our code in, I believe it was May of 2020. So the language has only been in the, conditional zoning district language has only been in the code since May of 2020.
So what changed between then and now that five acres is not the right number?
Nothing really has changed. It's more of, we, you know, the, we have had requests before for one or two small duplexes on, you know, less than an acre of land. So it's really more of if we're taking the require, if we're taking, if we're allowing duplexes and townhomes especially to come in as conditional zoning instead of an SUP, those can come in on less than five acres of land. And so it, it doesn't make, you know, we, in order to allow them to come in as conditional zoning, we need to remove that minimum size.
One other question. If it said that this allows for more public debate or public discussion, how does, how does being conditional allow that more than a special use? It seems to me special use would require more looking at than a conditional.
Yeah. So when it comes to the public being able to comment on it, the, the concern with special use permits is that the, in order for a public comment to be considered, it has to be either evidentiary or it has to be from an expert. Having a member of the public come up, and we've run into it in several cases, on a special use permit and say, you know, I have concerns because I think it's going to drop my property value, or I think it's going to add more traffic, unless they can back that up with evidentiary testimony, the board really can't consider that. Whereas under legislative procedure, there's no rules of evidence, and so members of the public would be allowed to come up and, and voice concerns that they have about a proposed development without there being that guardrail of the evidentiary proceedings around them.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on this topic? Having, having seen none, get comments from the board? You think? Or a motion?
I'm going to be honest and say I feel like we need a little bit more discussion on this. Are we not already in process of working on the UDC?
We are, and I was actually going to mention that. So this is, I do view this as a temporary text amendment, so to speak, in that it bridges us until we get our new UDC in place. I will say the way we are going with the new UDC, new UDC, UDO, we will be removing the special use permit requirements from these uses. So we're already heading that way. There'll, there's probably going to be some more standards added and some more design standards. It's just, right now, there was a request from Council and Administration to get these, these particular uses out of the SUP process. And so without having to, you know, do, this was something, this was done relatively quickly, but it, it gets us part of the way there to, to make it an easier process to go through these uses while still having them go through a public process and still have to, you know, meet certain requirements, and it provides both the staff and the council opportunities to work with applicants to place conditions on these projects if they desire to.
If the UDC is going to address it, and this is in fact basically temporary change anyway, what's the rush to do it? What benefit is there to put this in if it's going to change at some point in the not-too-distant future?
The only, the only way I can really answer that is that, you know, there's, there's a strong desire from council to not, that they, they do not want to see these projects continue to come through as special use permits. And so, you know, as, as I said, staff, we were asked to prepare this text amendment to, you know, on behalf of Council and Town Administration, because there was some concern, at least on council, about having, continuing to have these special use permits come through. Part of the concern, I think, from council with special use permit is that due to recent, due to relatively recent case law over the last couple of years, special use permits, while they're, they're supposed to be more difficult to receive, the way case law has been made in North Carolina, as long as an applicant provides, and this is what our attorney has said time and again, a scintilla of evidence, the council should approve that special use permit, which we're, most of our thought, and for years, the thought process in planning has been, special use permits is a bigger hurdle to, to get over in order to receive one. The way the case law has, has come out, it's actually a little bit, it's now more difficult for council to deny a special use permit. Whereas with the legislative process, with the conditional zoning process, it actually is easier for a council, for the council to deny a legislative request because there are not the requirements that they, that they have to receive evidence or that they have to review it from findings of fact. With it being a legislative decision, it is purely, you know, really up to council to decide if they, you know, if they wanted to deny something for almost no reason at all, they could. I mean, obviously, we're always going to, you know, staff and the attorneys are always going to push them to have a reason, and we would not expect council to deny something without good reasoning, but it is easier to deny a legislative procedure than it is a special use procedure.
This is, I'm not sure if, how this will hit you, but if this is a part of the stuff that was being changed when we were going over the UDC stuff, could not that entire part be enacted by the council? And, you know, they wouldn't have to consider any of that, you know, when, when the whole UDC change runs its course.
The, no. Short answer is, is no, not very easily. The, the way we are drafting and working on the, the new UDO, they're coming out in, in chapters and modules, and so, and they're, the new UDO is going to be, everything is going to be so connected throughout it, it's going to be very difficult to take one specific section and bring it forward without having the rest of it. So a big part of the new UDO for, you know, for, for future conditional zoning districts and, and uses is we're going to have some more and better standards. We're going to have some design designs for non-residential. We're going to have some design guidelines for residential uses that we can't enforce but that we can push if they come through as conditional zoning. Those are not going to be ready till, towards the end of the process. And so bringing forth a portion of the new UDO and trying to, and the other thing is, we're also completely changing the, the entire structure of our UDO. So there will, and part of that is, we are no longer going to codify our UDO through our current process through American legal. We are going to be removing it out of the town's code of ordinances and be self-codifying it. So it's going to have completely new sections and chapters and everything. So it just wouldn't really work to bring forth a portion of that.
One more question. It's my last one. If the, if the council requested it, and the council is ultimately the ones who will approve it, what purpose do we serve in voting yea or nay on this?
Really, you know, you're, it's part of the checks and balances. I mean, the Planning Board's position, the Planning Board's duty is to make recommendations on these things. So, but it's, you know, I, I would hope and I do believe that the council takes what the Planning Board says into consideration. And so if you have specific concerns about either some of the proposed amendments or doing this at all, or how we're doing it, you know, I would say, I think voicing those concerns will help and make sure the council knows that. You know, they may still decide to, to adopt the amendment, you know, because they want to see it done, but again, this is a part of the checks and balance system, and, you know, they have appointed you to this board for, because they do want to hear your input. One other thing I will mention too, by adding, by changing, for these uses, by changing them from a special use permit to a conditional zoning, this board, the Planning Board, will actually now see these projects and be able to comment on these projects, whereas before they went straight to Town Council. So that is another, you know, I would hope maybe a view does a benefit from your, from your perspective, is that you now get to see and comment on these things versus them going straight to Town Council.
Okay. Silly question. What, what things?
The projects. Sorry. Just any, you know, so now, whereas under our current ordinance, townhomes, apartments, and duplexes, if they're just, you know, one of those things, they would go through a special use permit process and they go straight to Town Council, they do not come to the Planning Board. If, with this text amendment, they would now come to the Planning Board first for you to give them, you know, a chance to review it, make comments on it, provide the public another opportunity to make comment on a project before it goes to Town Council.
Does anybody have anything else on the board to say about this? Does anybody want to make a motion one way or the other?
Mr. Howell, I just have one more question. Sorry. Can you give me a little background on a special use permit and how long it's been in play? I just feel like we're being super reactive and not taking our time to process through this and put it into the best way possible legislatively, so.
So special, special use permits as a type of permit have been around for a long time. I'm not sure how long Clayton has used them, but I, I mean, from what I can tell, they've used them for a long time. They've been, special use permits and the quasi judicial process has been authorized by the state planning statutes for a long, long time. I believe the, these particular uses that we're talking about tonight have been classified as a special use permit for a while. I, again, I don't know the full history. I don't know how long they've been special use permit requirements. I, my, I think it's, goes back at least to 2015 and may even as far back as 2005, which is, you know, one of the reasons I think we, over the years, the town has seen a lot of these planned developments and now conditional zoning districts, is because developers have chosen to go that path versus trying to go through a special use permit process. So, I mean, yes, I'll admit, I mean, this is, you know, this has been a little rushed and, you know, where staff has, has worked on this amendment and I think what we've put forth is a good amendment. My preference, you know, would have been to wait until we have our full UDO, but again, there's been a strong desire from council and others that we try and get these, really try and minimize the number of special use permits, especially for these uses that traditionally in other locations do not require a special use permit. I will say, you know, in my experience, Clayton is one of the few, if not only municipalities I'm aware of, that, that take, that requires a special use permit for townhomes or duplexes or apartments, and it is, it does, it is a different process.
So you said it was going to be a temporary, kind of temporary placement right now. Will the UDO, UDC committee be able to address those details after the fact?
Yes. So with the UDO work that we're doing, the committee will be seeing, will be seeing all the drafts, and so you'll see how in the new UDO we're proposing to handle these type of uses. Like I said, we are, these type of uses, with the exception of, you know, one or two districts where they may be permitted, for the most part, they're going to go to conditional, they're going to still be required to do a conditional zoning district. There will just be new standards put in place, but all that will be up for review and discussion by the committee prior to the text actually being formalized and, and go through, going through the adoption process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will point out, I mean, as I mentioned, I think in the presentation and staff report, that was one of the, there was a detail, there was a recommendation from the 2045 growth plan specifically relating to removing the special use permit process for townhomes, duplexes, and apartments.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion just essentially because I feel like we need more time on this. On the 2022-206-0A special use permit text amendments, plus planning and zoning, I vote that we pause at this time for more discussion.
Do we have a second?
So if I can, since the motion has, has been seconded before the board votes, I guess just for, for my benefit, trying to find out what, I guess the purpose of your motion, are you, are you thinking table this item and have staff bring it back to you in January? Are you thinking tabling the item indefinitely? I, I guess just so I can know.
I appreciate that. If we table it, are we going to meet between now and January to have more discussion, the committee for the UDO?
No, I don't think the UDO committee probably will not meet until February or March at this point.
Yes. I would think it would.
Can I speak, can I speak for them? I don't know. Just in light discussion, just would like more opportunity to review it a little bit more in detail.
Okay. So for now, I guess is a, is a motion to table the item until the January Planning Board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The second item on the agenda is also a public comment session, 2022-158-CZM Clayton Village Center Conditional Zoning District. Ben Howell, presenter.
All right. Good evening again. So this is a request to rezone properties shown on your screen outlined, outlined in that light green from the RE and B3 zoning districts to a conditional zoning mixed use district. This conditional zoning district would allow up to 234 multifamily units and approximately 5,100 square feet of commercial space with a density, maximum density of 20.65 units per acre. It's, the property is 12.39 acres and it's located on US 70 business near the intersection with Wildwood Drive, just on the east side of town. So on the screen here is the overall site plan or master plan for the proposed conditional zoning district, and you can see up in the corner here, this is the retail section, and then all the other buildings are apartments. So as mentioned, the proposed uses are mixed use apartments and commercial with a density of 20.65 units an acre. of 20.65 units an acre for a maximum of 234 units. It would have, the proposed project would have an access onto US 70 business as well as one or two accesses onto Wildwood Drive. Water, sewer, and electric would all be provided by the Town of Clayton. And you can see on the map there, the surrounding zoning, it is adjacent to I-1 zoning, RE zoning, and then just across Wildwood Drive is a PDR zoning, which is Buckhorn Branch Development, which is a townhome, townhome and single-family home development. You can see on your screen the development standards that the applicant has proposed, 65% maximum impervious surface requirement with 25-foot front setbacks, 15-foot side interior setbacks, 30-foot side street setbacks, 30-foot rear setbacks, and a 50-foot maximum building height. And I also wanted to provide the proposed, the trip generation that they have provided through their traffic impact analysis. They estimate the development would generate 3,204 trips per day, 297 trips in the AM peak hour, and 192 trips in the PM peak hour. The development is proposing to make several transportation improvements, and these are also conditions. They would, at their site access on US 70, they would construct a 100-foot-long eastbound right turn lane with appropriate deceleration and taper. And then at the US 70 Hardy Lane U-turn, they would extend that existing U-turn lane to, with full, with storage to 300 feet, again, with appropriate decel and taper. And then at Wildwood Drive, they would be required for improving their half of Wildwood Drive to, at a minimum, have 11-foot-wide travel lane, curb and gutters, and sidewalk along their frontage. And then there may be additional road or intersection improvements required through, by NC DOT through driveway permit process, and all these are also conditions on the development. As, as normal with these conditional zoning districts, the project will comply with Town of Clayton stormwater ordinance. There is public water available on US 70 Business and Wildwood Drive, and existing public sewer, gravity-enforced main are located on the site to provide sewer service, and electric service will be, is available and will be provided by the Town of Clayton. As required in our regulations, the development would have a 15-foot-wide Type C landscape buffer, as well as a thoroughfare buffer along US 70 Business, and interior landscaping would be required to meet EDC requirements. They have proposed some architectural standards, as you can see here. They have some standards for both residential and retail components, as well as standards that are specific just to the residential component and just to the retail component. As far as the conditional zoning district criteria, the 2045 growth plan calls for this area to be an employment center, and then there's a portion of the development site that is also designated for medium-density residential. The employment center category, according to the growth plan, provides locations for primary employment and economic development opportunities, while the medium-density residential category calls for gross density of three to five units per acre with single-family detached homes as a primary unit type. So as you can see, this development is not consistent with the 2045 growth plan, but it could provide, and it may provide, a transition from residential uses west of Wildwood Drive, the new development going on there, to the commercial and industrial uses that are along US 70 Business. Again, that's, while it's not consistent, there is some flexibility there, and, and there is an argument to be made that it could be a transitional, it could provide a transition between uses. The current zoning permits low-density residential and commercial uses, and the proposed conditional district permits high-density multifamily development and commercial uses, and the applicant is proposing to connect public water and extend public sewer to serve the development. The area around this development is currently a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses, and the development would provide a transition from the residential uses west of Wildwood Drive to the commercial industrial uses along US 70 Business to the east. The schools that would, would serve this development currently would be East Clayton Elementary, Clayton Middle, and Clayton High. And Clayton High, as I think we've mentioned for, for a number of these developments, is on the current CAPS schools list for Johnson County. Again, that's just for this current school year. We don't know how that may change after this school year or in the future. The development will be accessed by US 70 Business and Wildwood Drive. The development is providing clubhouse and pool as amenities with approximately 0.57 acres preserved as resource conservation area. The development is proposed to be served by existing sewer infrastructure on the site and is subject to the town wastewater allocation policy, which the council will vote on. The public order, as mentioned, is available on 70 Business and Wildwood Drive, and the development will have to follow the town stormwater ordinance. All town ordinances, procedures, and approvals will be followed. Staff does not believe there will be advert, staff believes any adverse impact effect on adjoining property enters should be mitigated with the landscape buffer, the opaque, opaque screening, as well as the improvements that the development will make to the existing public road network, connectivity and public utility extensions. And with the imposed, imposed conditions, no detriment is expected to the general public. Staff believes applicant has met the master plan approval criteria through the narrative and the master plan. Considerations for the planning board, your job here is to make a recommendation to the town council, that it also includes a written statement of reasonableness and consistency. You may recommend that conditions be added or removed, but again, the applicant has to agree to that. And then the conditional zoning district master plan and narrative, if ultimately recorded by, approved by the council, will be recorded with Johnson County and run with the land permanently. Staff recommends approval of the Clayton Village Center Conditional Zoning District master plan, subject to the following 14 recommended conditions of approval. The first three conditions are our standard conditions. Condition four is regarding the phases. Condition five is the permitted uses. Condition six is a development or dimensional standards. Condition seven is a requirement for the pool and clubhouse as amenities, which was, is related to their wastewater allocation scoring. Condition eight is a requirement to obtain electricity from Town of Clayton, and condition nine is related to the resource conservation area that will be preserved. Condition 10, 11, and 12 are all related to transportation improvements that they will be required to make, with condition 12 just being a catch-all of if there's any additional improvements required by NC DOT as part of their driveway permit process. Condition 13 is architectural standards that they've proposed, and then condition 14, again, is our standard condition, that if there's any conflict, the conditions control. And then finally, we have the recommended, staff has provided recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness. With that, the applicant is here and prepared to make a presentation. There may also be members of the public who would like to speak, and I'm also available to answer any questions if you have any.
Full of questions tonight. Do you know offhand how many currently approved apartment, townhome units Clayton has that are yet to be built?
Not offhand, but it is, it is probably a fairly significant number.
Significant in the hundreds or significant in the thousands?
So overall, we have somewhere in the, I believe, we're somewhere around 7,000 or 8,000 or more units that are approved and not yet built. Of those, I would hazard a guess, probably maybe half to two-thirds of those maybe are likely townhomes or apartments.
So 5,000 or 6,000?
Likely. Again, not, not completely certain, but yeah, we're, we have a lot that's sitting out there, and there's, there have been a lot of townhome and townhome projects coming through, and there's, while there have not been a lot of apartment projects come through lately, since I've been here, we do have a number of projects that are currently under development, under construction, that would include apartments, so, that are not yet built.
I have a question. The commercial projects, any commercial projects, they would go through us as well, correct?
If they come through, if they have to come through as a rezoning, they would come through you, but if they're in a, in a already commercial zoning as a permitted use, they would not have to come through you.
I guess it's more of a statement about just changing commercial property. We don't have a lot of it already, so I just wondered if there was any commercial builds on the back burner right now.
There, we do have a few, I think we do have a few commercial projects that are approved and not yet built. Several that have come through over the last year or so, and then a few more that are either part of larger developments. Ashcroft has a commercial section, I believe. We have the Copper District, which has a large commercial component. And then we have several smaller, we've had, you know, a couple SUPs come through that are commercial projects, and then administratively, we've had a number of site plans come through that are commercial projects as well.
And we have room for them?
Yes.
So retail, there's a small retail section. This might be a question for the applicant. Do we know what's going in there?
That would be a question for the applicant.
One, one thing I wanted to say is, on the last item, we were doing, trying to do something that would change the UDO temporarily until it was changed officially. On, on this one, it seems like we're trying to get this item through because it's, it's not, it's not going to meet the qualifications of, of the UDO when, when it goes into effect. Why, why would?
I would not say that. This is, I mean, again, this is a, a private development project, so I, I would not say that it, I, we don't know at this time whether it would meet or not meet the future UDO. So I mean, currently, it, it meets our standards from a, you know, policy standpoint, which is what the 2045 growth plan is, it's a policy document. It does not necessarily meet the policy guidance that the council has approved. However, from a regulatory standpoint, it, they, everything they've done to date meets the regulatory standards for the town.
Right, and, but if this were being done this time next year, if, if the plans that are in, on the table now for the UDO go through, my understanding is, from what you're saying, this, this would not meet, meet those qualifications.
I, if I gave you that, that.
Wrong?
Yeah, no, I don't believe that's.
Okay.
If I've said that, that's incorrect. I don't know, you know, again, we're, we're in the middle of drafting our UDO now, and we haven't even gotten to drafting the design standards, so we don't know how the design standards and design guidelines in the new UDO will change from what we currently have.
Anybody else? Okay. Call on the applicant to address whatever they'd like to?
Thank you, board members and Mr. Howell for your presentation. My name is James Todd, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Smith Anderson at Raleigh. We are excited this evening to bring this project forward. As you heard, this is a large mixed-use, primarily multifamily development off of Highway 70 Business. We have a number of the development team members here tonight, so I know, I'll hopefully be able to answer several of your questions, and then to the extent I can, we have some very smart people in the room who will be able to. So as Mr. Howell said, this is located near the intersection of Highway 70 Business and Wildwood. Immediately adjacent to the site, to the southeast, is commercial to the south, and then across Highway 70 Business, you have industrial uses. There are, there is residential to the west, and there's a small amount of residential that's immediately adjacent to the site, but it's a 12.39 acre site that touches a variety of uses. And on a bigger zoomed-out scale, this site is kind of right on the boundary between quite a bit of residential to the west, and then commercial to the south, and industrial to the east. So it really, we'll talk about how it's literally split by the comprehensive plan on the parcel, but it also is a transition between shifting use types from residential into more intensive commercial and industrial uses as you move through. You can see the current zoning here. The majority of the site is B3 highway business. There's a very small portion, that light green, that's the residential estate RE district, adjacent to industrial, across the street from Industrial 2, and then some RE and the, the PDR subdivision that's across Wildwood. We have an aerial map, but I'd like to spend some time in the bottom right map, which is the future land use plan that's a part of the town's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, I think, does a really good job, and certainly a lot of care and time is put into drafting it, but it is a, a large-scale project. It's a map that looks at the entire town, all the property, and makes policy decisions for the future growth that the town anticipates. So while it does a very good job of, on a large scale, identifying areas of growth and portions of, of property that the town has a certain, a certain view on the future of, on an individual site-specific scale, it can present some challenges. And I think that's, that's kind of the situation that we have here. Medium-density residential, which is the lighter tan color, is the, the western part, smaller portion of the site, and then it's employment center in the blue for the majority of the site. If we had a, a further zoomed-out photo, and I apologize for not bringing one, all of the property across Highway 70 Business is employment center, and then it also swoops in down below. So this isn't 100% accurate, we can, we can look at the map to be sure, but essentially, everything to the east and the south is employment center, and then you have more of those residential uses to the west. This site is in the boundary of those. There's also some community center, higher-density residential to the north, but this is really where those two large policy decisions of the town meet, where residential turns into industrial and commercial, and more of those economic development-oriented uses that the town is pursuing. This site has the, you know, lucky or unlucky honor of containing two of those uses, but we think that the multifamily mixed-use project that we're proposing does a good job of bridging the gap between those two uses. It certainly wouldn't make sense to put some of the more intensive economic development, industrial, commercial uses immediately adjacent to single-family residential, in the same way that you would think it'd be a, a waste of the employment center land use type to put, you know, the, the three to five single-family uses on this site that medium-density residential would call for. The, the compromise presented by this project is a mix of higher-density residential and the multifamily apartments, and then a smaller, about 5,000-square-foot portion of it used as retail, commercial, to benefit, obviously, the folks that would live here on this site, as well as, you know, the existing residential to the west. And that residential that's being proposed here, the 234 units, you know, offers, offers a service, really, to the employment center area, you know, provides housing, workforce housing, a different and perhaps more affordable housing type for the folks that will shop and work in these more intensive employment center and commercial areas. This is the site plan. It's, it's a big project, so certainly the, the detail could be a little bit better, but I, you'll see that there are three phases that are noted by the blocked dashed lines that run through the, the parcel. The first phase, which contains six of the multifamily buildings, as well as the clubhouse and pool, would be the first to be developed. Phase two is just the commercial retail to the north of the project, and then phase three, again, is solely multifamily, and that would be the third project. This is going to be a fairly long build-out. We think that there's some benefits there from an infrastructure, infrastructure perspective over time. All of the, the traffic improvements and the infrastructure requirements of the applicant would be done on the front end, but in terms of schools and wastewater and all those other things, you know, as the, the town continues to advance, there's a fairly long tail on this project to allow everything time to settle. So this isn't 234 units and retail dropped on the ground today, it'll be a multi-year process, it will come online as phases. I'd also point out that, difficult to see, but around the entire perimeter of the parcel, with the exception of the Highway 70 with the exception of the Highway 70 Business area, which also has a thoroughfare buffer, there is a Type C, six-foot-tall opaque buffer that runs around the site. It runs around the interior portion as well, around that sort of rectangular cutout portion. It's one of, if not the most restrictive buffer type presented by the Town of Clayton's UDC. It's a six-foot opaque buffer the day it's put in place. It's not two-foot shrubs that in 10 years will, you know, provide that barrier. It's put in as a six-foot opaque buffer. It's 15 feet wide. It is intended to provide sight and sound and separation for the site from adjacent uses. We recognize that this is a denser residential product. And again, we think it's a good balance for the site and the unique division in the comprehensive plan, but also are conscious that there's single-family residential across the street. And so some of those buffers are important, some of those design mitigation tools that help this, this project, you know, make sense and be well-designed on the site, but also be a good neighbor to the sites around it. You'll see some additional detail here, the locations of those buffers and screening, some additional detail on that Type C landscape buffer that we were just discussing, and then the thoroughfare street yard, which has some additional distance, street trees and frontage requirements along 70 Business. This is a rendering of the proposed multifamily. One of the, some of the conditions, rather, proposed by the applicant are for the actual design standards for the building. This is going to be, if approved, a fairly significant project that fronts on 70 Business and Wildwood. The goal from the developer, and, you know, obviously from the town side as well, would be for this to be a well-designed, attractive project. Important to the developer to get folks, you know, in the door to rent it, and important that, you know, the town has an interest in maintaining a high standard of construction and development for something that would be so public-facing. So part of that is material design requirements, masonry percentage requirements, and then the architectural-style shingles on the top, which we think is a, you know, an attractive and well-designed product. Some renderings of the clubhouse and pool that would be constructed as part of Phase one, these would be community amenities for this development. And then a rendering of the, the retail. We don't know exactly what, what type of retail, the specific tenant, that we're going, in large part, you know, that's a couple of years down the road, most likely, it'll be market-driven, and, but I'd imagine the goal would be something that would appeal to the residents of the community, as well as be an amenity, you know, to the surrounding residential. So we'll find out in a couple of years, but this is kind of a conceptual rendering of what that retail may look like. And there are additional design requirements that have been proposed as conditions to this rezoning to guide the development of that retail. The comprehensive plan and the future land use map designations that we talked about are an important part of this application. It's one of the things that makes this site unique, and I think makes it fairly challenging from both an applicant's side and, you know, the government's side of deciding whether or not this is an appropriate project. There is no perfect fit in the town's comprehensive plan, either for this site, but frankly, for denser multifamily. I think the Town of Clayton is continuing to see rapid growth, continuing to see a need for increased housing options and multifamily. We heard the number of residential units that are either in the permitting or approval construction process. I would, I would say that I don't think that is an indication that we are over-permitted or over-built, but really of the need that an area like the Triangle, and specifically the town, is facing with the explosion of population, the need to build and offer housing choice and good residential products for the people that continue to live in our communities and move here. We think this project does that. There is not a lot of multifamily in the Town of Clayton. There's not a lot of multifamily in this specific area. And with the proximity of this site to the Economic Center, future land use, the industrial and the commercial that we see across Highway 70 Business now, and the growth that we expect in that area with several of the vacant parcels in those future land use map designated areas, we think there's a real need. And we think that this product and this project helps fill that gap. As I said, we've talked about some of this, I'll try to be quick, but, you know, it brings an opportunity to transition from the more single-family and lighter-density residential, as well as to serve those industrial and commercial areas to the east, provides housing choice and more affordable options compared to a single-family product that might be more typical for the medium-density residential. And then some limited retail support, both for the project itself and the surrounding We have a traffic engineer in the room this evening, so if there are specific questions about traffic, I'll leave those for after to be answered by someone that, that understands exactly what's being done here. But there will be five entry and exit points, three on Wildwood Drive and two onto 70 Business. There are traffic improvements, as we discussed, especially along Wildwood, with the frontage requirements there, with the road being developed half by this project and half by the subdivision across the street, as well as the turn lane improvements that would go in. You see the study area that was done, a traffic impact analysis was completed for this project. And then we have the zoning conditions that were put in, which I think are, are an important piece of this project. It is denser, it is larger, and so some care and attention has to be given to the conditions that are put into place. And these have been proposed and discussed with staff as site-specific, project-specific conditions that hopefully mitigate some of the challenges posed by a larger project, while still making this, you know, a developable, good project that can be done by the developer and it can be an asset to the Town of Clayton. Mr. Howell went through these. I won't go back one by one, but certainly available to answer any questions you have about the conditions or more broadly about the project. So, thank you. As I said, I'm here, the development team is here, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board has. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, I will go back to the site plan, just in case there are, there are any questions.
I got a quick question. For the, for the, obviously, this is a, this is a commercial and residential development, but the commercial is pretty light out of this. I mean, it, I almost wonder what purpose it serves having a 5,000-square-foot building and the rest of a residential. Is that just so it can be called a commercial and residential site?
No, I, I think, I think the expectation is that it matches the market need. Jim Pericone is here tonight as, as experienced as real estate appraiser, but, and I'll let, I'll let Jim correct me and come up here if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the developer's assessment of this site and the Clayton market sort of matches what's being proposed here, which is that there's a great need for multifamily and a limited need, although it's still there, for commercial and retail, and that the, the allocation and balance on the site was chosen as a result of that market analysis.
I have a confusion question for your traffic impact engineer, if, if he's available for a second?
Absolutely.
I'm not as tall as he is.
Okay. I, I looked through the traffic impact analysis thing there, and I won't say I understand it as I go through it. The one thing that confused me is 180 pages into it, there are four or six pages on the, the shops at Glen Laurel, and I could not figure out what kind of connection the shops at Glen Laurel have with this development.
Sure. We scoped this traffic study out with the town and with the NC DOT, and they require, and I'd have to look just to make sure, but they require that traffic from area developments also be included, projected and included as part of our future traffic analysis, and that traffic would be included as well.
Well, the, the shops at Glen Laurel, if you've, if you are familiar with that, aside from the apartments, which are on, on the side of it, there's a bank, a daycare, a storage building, and one restaurant. There's, there's no, no traffic to speak of going on at that piece of land.
We were required by NC DOT to add the Buckhorn Branch and Glen Laurel mixed-use developments as part of our approved developments.
Okay.
So like I said, it, it, it could have been a misprint on the sheets in the back, but like I said, with the traffic that was used were from these two developments.
Okay. Okay, I just, I was, I live in the area of, of the shops at Glen Laurel, and I continually go through there just to see if anything's been built, and it hasn't. And so, so there's, there's no traffic going through there, and, you know, it, there is traffic on the roads adjacent to it, but that's would be like Highway 70 for, for this development. And, you know, okay, I just wondered if I was missing something on that, but it's...
It's, they provided the traffic study for us, and any traffic that would be coming from that development across our frontage along 70 would be included as part of ours. So it could be a portion of it, or probably was a portion of it, maybe not all of it, but some of it would go by. And so that portion, based on the, it was completed by another engineer, but based on their findings or their analysis, that portion was added to our future traffic in front of our site.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a question about the affordable part. There's 234 units?
It is.
What percentage is affordable? And what, and what do you guys consider affordable?
Yeah, so affordable is a loaded word at planning meetings, and maybe not my best choice. To be clear, this is not proposed as a percentage of average median income, as a specific affordable HUD project. Affordable in the sense that it increases supply to the Town of Clayton, affordable comparing an apartment unit to a single-family home that could be developed under a lower density, but not a specific subsidized or tax-benefited affordable product or percentage within the development itself.
Is there anybody in the public, in the audience, who would like to ask any questions or have any comments about this project?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hi. So, on that map, you see that very little dotted line?
Could you give us your name?
Oh, sorry. Jessica Hedrick, John Hedrick. We are actually the property owners that are directly affected by this. We are the dotted line, oh, property, on the business side. Yeah, so on that Phase whatever it is, Phase 2, they're saying, so you see that business? Our house is that property that's dotted out. Our biggest concern is like we just saw on the map that they're like, the buffering is trees. We have two little kids. That's parking lot. We don't have a fence that runs down that property. So people coming in and out of that business, they're not paying attention. By accident, we're not outside. What's to say our children don't get hurt? What's to say somebody even from that business comes over to our house? There's no actual safety measures in place for that. Not only that, we are the only house, the only house, and I can tell you this with a fact, that's still on a well. We do not have city water or town water. We are the only one on the aquifer. We're the only house left on Duke Energy. We are not par the town because we left it like that. We are the only one left. The house next door to it, which is not outlined, because obviously it's not directly affected, that brick house, no one lives there. The owner just is a commercial renter. He just rents it out to whoever decides to do it. And then obviously, we know the two burnt-down houses. We do know the plan, we've looked at it. So we do know that that place is supposed to be businesses by 2045. So we know our house will not exist by 2045. We already know that. We know the homeowner, Jill, at her brick house and her trailer that's on that big plotted area in the back, and she lives there until she's dying. She literally said that she's going to die in her house. But our concern is our property, since it's directly affected by the entire project. I mean, what, they can't guarantee anything. The power lines literally run to both houses. The power lines literally sit in the middle, because we share that property line. So that property line that they outlined is a dual property line. Like, there's no easement on that, because it's a dual property line that runs up and down, that entire line. So how are they going to guarantee that our stuff is not going to be affected when both houses share? That's a house right now, just so you know. That's a house of the family that lives in it that they're about to bulldoze down sometime in the future and displace a family. With two kid, with, how many kids? They got four kids. Two parents and four kids, that they're going to just bulldoze down the house to build a little business and then affect our property at the same time. That's what this plan is going to do to our family.
Can I ask the applicant? You had, you had shown us the tree lines on the thing, the opaque 10, six-foot buffer. When I was looking at the trees, that, that's the line along Highway 70. Is that not, is that not correct? The space tree, yeah, the, right there. What, what does the buffer look like where, where the young lady was, was, was saying?
Right, so...
Their property line is?
Along that property line, that buffer, one of the options for the Type C buffer is a six-foot-tall fence, and that is what will be installed along that property line. That was the intent of the developer, and we're more than happy to include that as an express condition of approval to market out and make sure that it's, it's very clear and the obligation is set for the six-foot fence to be installed in that area. You know, we, we certainly appreciate neighbors coming out. Part of the, the value of the planning board process is for us to hear concerns. And, and not all of that conversation is probably going to happen tonight, and certainly that can be a point of emphasis for us between now and Town Council. But to this two specific issues, there will be a six-foot fence along that property line. And obviously, any utilities will be, I'm not sure exactly where they are on the ground, but engineering and design will make sure that there's no utility interruption, and any relocation that has to take place will be done with the utility companies to ensure, you know, continuous service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we have to have a motion before we can discuss.
Well, any further discussion?
Let me say this, and I'm going to come off tonight as a real negative Nellie, and I'm not trying to be. Concern I have when we have, in your words, probably 5,000 already that's approved condos or apartments, whatever they happen to be. And we have, we have council representation here tonight, even though not here necessarily in official capacity tonight, but I would, I would really recommend that as a board, we tell the Town Council that some towns around the country will put a moratorium on approving new things until some of what's already been approved gets built. A little rain every couple of weeks for two or three years is a great thing. Two or three years' worth of rain in two weeks will wipe you out. And if we've got 5,000 opportunities right now for somebody to move to Clayton with a husband, wife, kid or two, we're talking about 15,000, 18,000 people, obviously, everything's not going to get built overnight, but it could be built in a very, very short period of time. And I don't know what impact that would have on the Town of Clayton. I'm also very concerned with the fact we have a lot of stuff that we're building now that if the folks that are moving to those units... that if the folks that are moving to those units should decide they want to live in Clayton permanently, there's really nowhere for them to go with living Clayton permanently because everything is a town home or a condo or an apartment. And that's a concern of mine. I'm not going to vote against this. I'm not going to stand in the way of a developer and who's living up to all the things that we're asking to do. I am concerned, though, that this is, would be the second or third time, I'm trying to remember this year, that we have done something that, in your words, is inconsistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, which hadn't been around all that long. And so I'm not sure what the purpose of a 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan is if we consistently do something that's not consistent with it. So that concerns me a little bit. That's my opinion.
And Mr. Howe, my bigger picture concern is just losing valuable, is this really the best use of our prime commercial property at this time when, to Mr. Dupree's point, we have so many other, you know, builds in the works? I guess I'm just concerned that we're using commercial property and changing it over to conditional zoning is going to open it up for mixed-use properties, and we're not, you know, we're losing prime commercial real estate where to enable us to grow as a town, we're going to need that in the future to put things here that keep people here.
Yeah.
Is there a question here?
Sorry.
I guess I'm just voicing my concern, and we don't have a lot of commercial property unless there's some out there that I haven't seen, especially on 70. We have so many other areas that, as I well know, are still open to builds for townhomes and apartments and things like that that haven't even been looked at off the main thoroughfare. So I guess that's, I don't know why we would put mixed-use properties right on 70, right, on a commercial spot that might be prime for a good commercial.
I think what she's saying, and what I feel too, the concern is you can go down some of the sides, you can go down some of the roads around town and go a mile, half a mile, and build apartments, townhomes, whatever you want to build, and nobody thinks twice about it. But nobody's going to go down those same roads and build a business because businesses are going to be on a major thoroughfare. And if we continue, we approved last month the one around Walmart. That was several hundred units. If we continue to approve units that are on the commercial thoroughfare, then all we're doing is eventually pushing the commercial further and further out from the town of Clayton to where we truly are, what we've always been, which is a bedroom community for Raleigh, will be a bedroom community for Smithfield or for Wilson Mills or somewhere where they're actually building a business. Everybody that's come before this board over the last year or two has made the comment that this provides housing for the workforce, and I agree with that. But I don't know where all these people are working because we're not building businesses that are, some of our businesses are growing. But I'm just concerned with building along a major thoroughfare that might be better suited for business that we know won't go out into the countryside to build, whereas you could build apartments in the country, if that makes sense.
So do we just make a motion one way or the other now and go along with that?
So, I mean, at this point, you know, I mean, the board certainly can continue to discuss it, or, you know, you can put a motion on the table, you know. Excuse me, as a reminder, I mean, y'all, you are an advisory board. I mean, you have the option to make no recommendation and let this move to the council without recommendation. Or like with other items, you're within your power to table it, to make a recommendation for denial. So, I mean, you have a lot of options at your disposal here.
Could we ask the developer to consider more retail along that Highway 70 corridor? Better use mix?
You certainly could. I mean, that certainly could be an option, or you could ask them to consider that and come back. You know, that may take a longer time for them to evaluate that and be able to come back with something. Or you could also, you know, include that as part of your reasoning for making a recommendation as well.
The applicant looks like he wants to make a comment, so.
We just, I think those are some really good points that have been raised. Jim is here, I think, can shed some context on why the decision was made and, you know, probably a better view of the market in Clayton than I have.
This is Jim. Who's Jim?
Good evening, members of the planning board. I actually know all of you, so it's unique, as I said before the meeting, to be up here talking to you in this manner rather than sitting with you debating the benefits of changing the UDO of late. So with this, first of all, let me say this project's been in the works for four years. So just to give you some perspective, and they've gone through a lot of challenges trying to get this through, not the least of which was COVID hitting shortly after they proposed the project. Number one, number two, a change in staffing, which led to the direction to go with conditional zoning, then a switch back to get a special use permit, and then now go back to conditional zoning. So this has been a four-year adventure for these folks. I've been part of it for about 18 months. I want to first address why put housing here and that particular issue. Again, as a member of the steering committee when the Comprehensive Growth Plan was done, one of the things in retrospect a number of us have talked about since is that we really neglected the multifamily market, which was growing not only here but across the United States in terms of providing other housing options. And when you think of housing, you have to think of the housing ladder. You know, where do we all start out? I know I personally started out in an apartment building, and eventually I was able to go to a duplex. And from the duplex, I went to a house. And then I went to a house with a bigger yard because I'm part of a generation that wanted a yard. There's a whole generation coming through that doesn't want to maintain a yard. They prefer more amenities in a smaller housing, smaller house. So with that, what we're trying to provide here is that housing ladder where there is that entry point for people coming in, particularly from a workforce standpoint. And again, the reason it's talked about is, you know, both at the county level, across the chambers of commerce, there is a significant effort to improve the workforce here in the county and in the region overall. If you talk to most business owners right now, they can't find people to staff. We've seen, you know, restaurants, all kinds of businesses curtailing hours because they're unable to staff. So there is also data showing that the United States in general is woefully behind in terms of having enough housing, period. Even with the interest rate change, I was talking to a residential developer that saw early in the fall this year a decline in the amount of, or the number of houses they were selling because the interest rates were going up. By the start of December, they started to see things picking up again. So the market started to adjust to a different rate level. I would guess, seeing at least a couple of people here on this board with gray hair like mine, that you can remember days where interest rates were in the double digits, and we still bought houses. We weren't happy about it, but we did buy houses. So again, it's what you're used to and what you get adjusted to. So from the standpoint of why do this? I think it's to provide that, another entry point for the housing ladder. If you look at single-family homes, executive homes, those kinds of things, they're not going to go in this kind of setting. So that then begs the point that you brought up last, why not see more commercial development in this area? And again, commercial follows rooftops. So when you look at what's happening here and the Comprehensive Use Plan, the intent of that plan was with the Employment Center to see more manufacturing, industrial, those kinds of developments. If you look at what's going on with the warehouse project on Chatwell Road, that is right next to a multifamily project. Again, so we're looking at that as sort of the model for what's being done. As far as the amount of commercial in this space, it's limited because we don't want to see a gateway entrance to the town with vacant space. Again, for those that have been around, we saw when the Walmart Center had a lot of vacancies, it wasn't a pretty point coming into town, and we don't want to see those same things. Retail, small office, those kinds of things, that market is changing. We've seen the Amazon effect and e-commerce and what that's done to a lot of it. So what we're seeing in the commercial market is people are looking for smaller spaces, not larger spaces, and the ability to fill those is key. Thinking about this for tonight's presentation, one of the things that's come up was, you know, if you build 10,000 square feet, if you build 15,000 square feet, what happens? Well, if you can think about Riverwood, when they put the commercial space in their athletic club at Riverwood, that sat vacant for quite a bit of time, and that's not the kind of thing that looks good for a community or for a town in general. If you look at the commercial property on, at Amelia Church Road and 42 West, there's a small strip center there. 30% of that is vacant. That was constructed in 2017. They have apartments. They certainly have more housing in and around and proximate to it, and yet it's still 30% vacant at this point in time. The Clayton Village Center, which is just down the road where the food line is, they're sitting right now, as of today, on 6,000 square feet of vacant commercial space. So we can talk about we want commercial, but the reality is what we want and what the businesses are willing to do and what they're able to do is two different things. So again, these are the challenges that are there. I pulled data this morning from Placer AI. Placer AI is software that tracks behavior. The Economic Development Department here at the town of Clayton is using the same software. It tracks 31 million cellphone users across the United States. Somebody is tracking you, if you didn't know it. And it provides a wealth of data in terms of what's going on. If you look at that corridor and the people that are driving up and down it today, the commercial they're looking for, they're going to or from White Oak. They're going to and from a Target somewhere. They're looking for that big commercial, not the smaller commercial we're talking about here. So the intent here was to put something in smaller size that would be service-oriented, nail salons, hair salons, the things people use on a regular basis that are close by, and also recognize that there's commercial across the street in terms of Southern Village that exists today. And there's consideration now with expansion over there. There's the whole project at the corner where the railroad may at some point sell or develop at the corner of 42 East and 70, develop that commercially, which is a large, would be a huge project in terms of the size of that. There's a goodwill project where the community college may go on the other side. So there's a lot happening in that area. We don't want to put these clients, I don't want to see this client personally put in a lot of commercial that then stays vacant because it's not good for that apartment community, and it's certainly not good for the town as well. So I hope that answers questions. I'd be happy to answer anything else you may have.
One thing I would like to not ask. I agree with most everything that you've said. But the bottom line on this is to add 300 and some, 234 apartments. We heard earlier from Planning Director that we have something over 5,000 units of apartments have been permitted. We've got that. Why, you know, why would we want to make that 5,500 or 5,200 or whatever the number would be? That would be permitted, and we're still short of apartments. Those apartments haven't been built. Why haven't they been built and yours would be built?
Right, so in response to that, I don't know what the permitted numbers for multifamily are versus townhomes or single-family homes. I know we're into the thousands in terms of permitted but not yet built in terms of housing. I don't know what the splits are. The only thing I'll tell you is this project, again, because of the phasing, is going to be a multi-year project. So this won't come online all at once. It will come online over time. And obviously, you don't go to the next phase if you're not filling the first phase. You don't go to phase two if phase one is still vacant. So I think it's anticipating where the town is going, where the kind of growth we've seen that's taking place in Clayton right now and what's likely to continue to follow. So it's being prepared and having sufficient housing when the demand is there. Again, we still have people today looking for houses or looking for housing in the community. So it's trying to be prepared rather than reactive.
I can understand that. I would also say to your comment that people are still looking. We wouldn't build phase two before we had phase one filled up. If that's the case, you haven't been down to the shops at Glen Laurel because that is, 90% of the shops of the area that's supposed to be built out four or five years ago is dirt.
Right, and that is to my point. And that supports my point regarding the commercial side of this development. The housing, the apartments they build there fill very, very quickly. The commercial side is, again, the concern. And I would say that's a great example, supporting my position, that if you overbuild the, you know, they've slotted a lot of space for commercial that the demand hasn't been there yet to build it. That's what we're trying to avoid here by keeping it smaller and focusing on what would serve us that immediate community in terms of needs.
Okay, and that's still, as I was saying, the, I'm assuming you were here earlier in the meeting when Mr. Dupree asked about the apartments and townhouses that were available, and the director said that it was 5,000 to 6,000?
Right, I just simply said that, yeah, I'm deferring to him.
Yeah. Well, that's my, if we have that many currently permitted, I'm not trying to say that you've got to get, excuse me, you've got to get at the back of the line or something. But is there a reason that anybody here would know why those permitted apartments and townhouses haven't been built? And why yours would be?
Right, I suspect, again, they're phasing it like most of these projects are done. And with the phasing, there's time to get it completed in terms of, you know, after this approval, you just don't go out and build. There's a lot more work that has to be done, additional permitting, planning. The infrastructure has to go in. Some of this is going to, you know, some of these projects, we already know are waiting for the new wastewater treatment plant to come online, which is, you know, a couple of years down the road at best. So that's, all this is looking ahead. We're feeding a pipeline that's not going to see results for a number of years. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Is there any further comment from the board? Would somebody like to make a motion?
For the sake of moving this on to the Town Council, did the applicant say that you would be willing to put some type of opaque barrier up between the housing across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify where we're talking about, the arrow to the top left adjacent to the commercial piece is already going to have a type C 15-foot buffer. One of the options for that buffer is an opaque fence, six-foot tall opaque fence. And that's what we're proposing to build. So we'd be fine with the condition that requires it as part of the approval process in that area. It may not be appropriate for the entire site.
Okay, for the purpose of moving this along one way or the other, I will, I make a motion to approve with that added to it. I guess I need to read Ben this, all our statements of consistency and inconsistency. I make a motion to approve along with that addendum to it that was agreed to by the applicant. In doing so, In doing so, we find this rezoning action to be inconsistent with future land use map and the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan, and we find this rezoning action reasonable and in the public interest because it supports goal LU1, LU2, and LU3 of the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan by encouraging growth in appropriate areas, providing a sense of place, and enhancing aesthetics along major corridors, and in new developments, and providing a range of housing types and lot sizes to meet the needs of various income levels, family sizes, and ages.
I'll second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Is there any new business, Mr. Director?
No, no real new business, just a couple of quick updates. You will have a new board member joining you in January. His, he was just appointed last night by the town council. His name is Derek Applewhite. He currently works with the North Carolina League of Municipalities and has previously worked with one or two other municipalities in the area. So we're looking forward to getting him on board. So at the January meeting, we will be swearing him in, as well as, as a reminder, having chair and vice chair elections. And with that, as a reminder, town hall and town offices are closed on Friday and then Monday and Tuesday next week, and then we're closed again on Monday, January 2.
Is there any, any other informal discussion or public comment? Looks like the public left.
Public.
Okay. Having determined that, can I get a motion for adjournment? Motion?
I second it.
Second. We're adjourned.